Is that me?
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, could you take your phone?
Yeah.
For weekend.
Try to do that again.
Oh dear.
Seven o'clock.
It's still chilly outside, isn't it? We've got a minute to go.
We've got seven o'clock.
Yeah, I think my phone's a minute shy. Right, so welcome everybody, nice to see you all here. Bit chilly out there now, isn't it? Couldn't believe the frost this morning, could you? It was incredible, wasn't it? Pond in our garden, it goes, smash the ice. Well, I did bridge it. But there we are. So, right then, so that's absolutely brilliant. So we will now carry on with the council meeting itself. Cheers, Guy. Right, apologies for absence. Um, Lincoln can't make it, she is really very busy at the moment. So, but I think we're all here, aren't we? Apart from that. So that's brilliant. Um, two one three, no announcements. Well, not a lot's happened since our last meeting. Um, we've, the main thing of course was, what's the name, wasn't it? And it's Saturday. How many of you were there? Lots of it, absolutely incredible. It really, really was. And.
It's for shotguns though.
Yeah.
I shouldn't have a shotgun.
Um, so, yeah, that was really wonderful. And, uh, the other thing was that today, uh, we had a Summer Valley working group. And this goes back to, um, a group of us together from the whole of the Summer Valley. Um, they went out to visit Froome a while ago. To see what they've been doing to get their town from a very little backward town to what it is now. People are going there all the time, they've always got things on. All their shops have got people in. And it was absolutely amazing to be taken round by a couple of the councillors and officers. And be shown things that go on in the town. And so the idea is that what can we do within the Summer Valley, working together? Um, to develop our own area? And get it going again? Um, so that was a meeting today and there will be more coming up. Uh, so, um, that's, and anybody who's interested to come and do things, then that would be great. So, um, pretty much that's it from me today. Um, so items two one four, declarations of interest. Any?
None.
No? Okay, two one five, exclusion of press and public. We do have an item. Yes, we do. Yes, we do, two three eight. So we'll be, um, is everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Yep. Hope you do. Um. Uh.
Bring two three four.
Two, yeah. Yeah.
It was just, I'm not sure what, quite, when the right time is to mention this, but I'd like to.
Two three four.
Propose bringing two three four up before we discuss the budget.
Let me just, uh. Okay, so if everybody is happy with that, we'll bring in two three four, um, after two two one. Okay? Right. So we're on to two one six, the minutes of the last meeting. Anyone got any comments, please? No? No? Okay, so is everybody happy to, uh? Reno's proposal? Brian, second, Richard? Everybody happy? Yeah? Okay, lovely. So I'll sign those when we, the end of the meeting. Um, two one seven, received verbal reports from town council's founding committee. Think I've written for that one, isn't it, planning?
Uh, thank you. So, uh, yeah, the planning committee met. Um, there were two important or significant planning applications that were considered. Uh, one relates to, um, an access way, um, at the top of Silver Street. Uh, which has been, we've been asked to be re, it's been reassessed following our judicial review, um, on the mend of the site. So we've had an opportunity to put a subsequent comment in, um, which could have been quite useful. But rather than comment on the application question, uh, the committee decided to reiterate its previous comment about the, a different planning application in amended. Uh, that was our position. Uh, the second, um, significant application was for Dragonfly's application for, um, a coffee kiosk uh, by the leisure centre. And with the idea that could have a drive-through offering to increase, um, their, their income. So we did support that application. But we qualified our support, um, by suggesting that we didn't see the point of the drive-through. And we thought the drive-through should also incorporate a toilet facility. And, uh, so I really hope that that application, the planning of sort of listening to our support. Otherwise this town council may have accidentally or otherwise jeopardised business, leisure and public convenience. Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, two one eight, to hear reports from councillors attending meetings of outside bodies.
Anyway, uh, some significant items. And we had a present, uh, presentation by Dr Alex Roberton, who is the electric vehicle lead for Vains. That doesn't mean to say he actually carries electricity, but he's the lead officer. Um, and he's talking about charging points for electric vehicles. Public charging points in more rural, more rural areas. Because, uh, it's going to be difficult if you buy an electric vehicle and you have no driveway. And your house runs straight onto the street and there's no rear access. So these public, uh, points are going, going, going to be needed. Um, so they've got a couple of, um, uh, a few schemes such as hubs. A hub based around a community building which might, which would have parking spaces. So when more of those spaces could be given over to charging. Um, now I asked about Mid Seven Orton, because I don't even got a public charging point. Um, but as we are not exactly rural, is, uh, maybe don't count any of this consideration. Um, another thing, uh, ALCA, that's the, um, Ava Local Councillors Association. As, um, Deborah White is their officer and she manages the organisation very well. And she's retiring after, well. I don't know how many years, but I've known her since I've been a councillor. So this is going to involve a starting review, so there could be a restructure in it. Um, ALCA is ma, is managed all. So, uh, we await that. Um, there's a sat mart that'll take up in training. ALCA do set up training, um, sessions to have a whole library of training sessions. Um, and it's felt that councillors in general could, um, benefit from, uh, some initial training where they become councillors, so that they know what they're, they know what is in store for them when, when they're sitting at the table. And, um, the next thing of course is June, which is the ATM. Yeah, the ATM. Uh, the date is to be fixed here. And that's the end of my diatribe.
Okay, anyone else got any, any suggestions, Michael?
Yes, I've just got back from Radstock where there's something else called the Summer Valley Workshop, actually, which, uh, um, you must have mentioned in the earlier iteration there. Um, this was a meeting with consultants that Vains is employing to, um, start putting in ideas, uh, some kind of strategies for the next local plan as such, rather than the partial update we've, we've just had. Um, it was very well attended. Um, but I can't say that I noticed anything unusual coming out of it. So all I did was try and put forward what we value in our community, um, which included green spaces, included water. Um, included a, um, a sustainable balance of housing and jobs. And, and I think those points, um, got across, but, um, they're not in there. So just so that you know, that's going on.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else going to any meetings? No? Okay, then we'll go on to item two one nine, accounts for payment over two hundred and fifty. Any queries?
No, for me?
No? So. Yes, so can we have a proposal for the second? Proposal from Steve, second from Brian, everybody in favour? Okay. And the items under two hundred and fifty. Any queries? No? Proposal? Gordon, second up? Richard? Everyone in favour? Thank you. Right. Hope you do. Um, item two twenty, monthly reports. So have you all had a chance to go through it all?
Oh, yeah. Point two.
Any queries?
Yeah.
No? No? So can we have a proposal for the monthly reports then, please? Brian, second up? Steve? Thank you very much, everybody in favour?
Yeah.
Okay, lovely. And, uh, item two two one, the update on the town hall transformation. So we're reinstating standing orders now. Okay, with everyone? And go on to item two three four, which we brought forward. To consider cancelling the street marshals.
Shall I start and see?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's twelve years now since, uh, there are still a number of us here who were part of setting up Mid Seven Norton Town Council. Um, and having the marshals was one of the ideas for improving the town community life, which, uh, we came up with. Um, there was also the town park, the Welton Brook and Walk area. And of course the transformation of the town hall, uh, the orchard hall. Most of the things which, uh, this Mid Seven Norton Town Council has sought to achieve in those twelve years have been things which are front loaded in terms of costs. And also things which can be, have the distinct possibility of finding funding, um, outside the, uh, the council tax preset, which, which we've succeeded in doing. But the, the marshals are a contrast to that. The marshals are not front loaded, they are ongoing and indeed increasing cost. And so it's quite right that they should be reflected on and, and reconsidered in my view. Um, we didn't envisage, I think, twelve years ago, that employing marshals would be a permanent fixture on the costs of the town council. That the night time economy needed a helping hand and we felt in a position to do it. But I don't think we envisaged that it would be a permanent one. Um, as I said in the form, um, we're very unusual indeed, especially as a small town council in conducting this kind of arrangement. Um, we happen to have at this moment an opportunity, since the current marshals have ceased their contract. And it comes at all certain moment when we find ourselves under budget pressure because of the quite legitimate, uh, costs which were overtaken for those other excellent projects, especially the town hall. Um, so I, 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 I put it forward that this is the time when, um, at least for the time being, we should say we'll leave the policing of the, of, of, of the, uh, of the night time economy to others, those who profit from it, who've spoken tonight. And those who are employed to do it, like the police. And for the moment, we could, we could have a pool. If we want to reinstitute it at a later date, of course, we can try to do that. So that's my proposal. Therefore now we take this opportunity to suspend our support of marshals.
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, it's very difficult, obviously, everything is. We've had people saying that the preset's going too high, don't cut services, cut services. And I was a little bit alarmed that the marshal budget did jump by forty percent for any sort of system. Forty percent's a big increase, you're looking at the budget, you're thinking that's just gone right up. Um, so instantly, we have to look at that, does it have to be that high? Um, I, I do look around and couldn't find many town councils that pay really for marshals. And certainly not as much as we do. So Bath, for instance, they get businesses to pay for the marshals. It's probably easier in Bath because they've got more businesses than we do. But, um, they don't pay for it out of the preset. Because Bath's preset's so small. Um, but it is a big bill for us. Um, and I think it probably is. Uh, the initial budget of twenty eight thousand pounds a year seems very, very high. Um, I, I would, I would think rather than necessarily cut, cutting that budget totally, I think that budget could be heavily reduced. Um, and then we could look to find different ways to support the security services that the council provide. I'm quite a big fan of, um, other security measures as well, um, like for instance CCTV. Um, we've got a lot of vandalism. But we don't have a lot of vandalism in here that's covered with CCTV, it's worked very well for us. We've had people in, coming in and apologising. And I think there are parts of this town that feel dangerous, that need to be tidied up, need to be better lit. These things all cost money. And I think that's part of a general strategy of improving the, the kind of, the feeling of the town. And I, I, I think twenty eight thousand pounds just in the marshal budget is too much. And I think we should be looking to, to budget about half of that. And, uh, looking if other firms want to come in and help support the council, that's more than welcome. But I think that's a reasonable budget for this, a council of this size to, to put forward.
Yeah, Brian?
Uh, just as a quick, uh, uh, the marshals don't start till quite late on in the evening. And part of the reason for having them was to make people feel more secure in the town. Um, going to restaurants and going out for meals and that sort of thing. But I think most people visiting the town for those types of reasons, uh, going out for meals and things, um, will probably be gone home by the time the marshals have started. And I'm not sure that they, uh, perform that, that role to, um, to help the general public sort of feel safer.
But anyone else got any comments?
No, I think I agree with Brian and Michael and, we just can't afford it as a town.
I, do you think there is, sorry. I worry that what will happen when we, if we stop the wardens. We have had, um, the, the wardens, marshals rather, have had a very busy time since Covid. Uh, and most week, most weeks their reports have, have contained incidents, several incidents. And there was one serious incident when a marshal was attacked. Um, and he was punched so badly that his injuries are life changing. Now then, if we pull these people off this hock, uh, pale of, uh, lesson. Who's going to stop those people who are so belligerent, aggressive, fugalistic from causing, um, harm to innocent bystanders? The marshals, I think, have done a very good job in minimising that risk. And it would worry me, it would worry me that we, um, if we stop them. We did have a budget of about eighteen thousand before. And, um, somehow or other during Midas's term, it's let up ten thousand. I'm not too sure that I know why. Um, but I think we should, I think we should keep a steady budget in there to meet the, uh, to meet the service.
Well, contrary to what I've already, to, to know, I personally think, the police are there, we, we, we pay for the police. They should be the people who are enforcing public law and order, not personally the, the marshals.
I agree with you. I, I, I agree, you know, in consensus, really, the marshals have done a good job recent time. Yeah, um, but that we need to look at how much you're paying towards the Slade area before looking at the amount we pay in the reduction to some degree of what we pay. The, the meeting we had, the cat meeting we had, was, was very, which I think you were, I think it was very usual. You know, very positive, lots of good things came from that. But, well, I don't know whether they came from it, the meeting itself was very good, that needs following up. So I agree with Sean in that there's need to be consultation, we need to where the, the local businesses think. You figure out what is, what they, what they really need and what we, how we can do that better, but also at the same time save ourselves. The other thing I'm kind of aware of is that town is very, very quiet at times as well as just having this one option.
I didn't support having street marshals in the very beginning, only years ago. And I do believe they've run their course.
Right, so for what to come up? Sorry?
I think it should be, we, we should have more police here. Actually, I don't have any pay for.
We can't do anything about that, can we? Unfortunately.
No, the Vains can.
It's not our responsibility, to be honest.
No, they can't.
Unfortunately, we'd love it if we could, but. So what we've had is, um, straight, we don't want the marshals anymore. So would someone like to propose that? Michael? Anyone like to second it? Steve?
I have no idea about that.
Right. We also have another one, that we keep the marshals, but we look at the budget.
We, well, that's one of the new, we set a security budget.
Right.
Of, of, roughly half our budget. And that can be spent on marshals if they're needed, when they're needed, perhaps boosted by firms. It can also be spent on other security measures which could also be affected.
So would someone like to second that idea?
The motion is then to keep a marshal or a security budget.
Yes.
A security budget. We can't just spend it on, keep it spent on marshals sometimes.
Yes. No, but I want to get what is going to spend. So the, the second one is that you keep the budget and decide what is going to be spent on security wise, is that it?
Reduce it to A, reduce the budget, reduce the budget.
Okay, we haven't decided as yet what the budget would be, so, yeah. So there would be a budget.
Because at the moment, we don't have, we don't have, we, we haven't, we haven't employed marshals. We've deployed the marshals, but they're now up here. And some of the marshals have stepped in in the interim, but they haven't done the, the process to be implemented. So that's why we, we go into the tender, the preset. So once you get to that later, it might be clearer.
Yes. So we, yeah. Yes, please.
There's a second proposal that of course would mean stopping the marshals. Because you couldn't have marshals and the secondary proposal.
The secondary proposal, did I get it wrong then? Is that, that there would be a budget to be used for security, which could be for marshals. Or it could be the cameras put up or whatever. Brian?
In the first instance, you can't do the second one if I stop in the first.
No, well, we're going to go through the voting session in just a minute. Just wanted to get the ideas that people wanted to vote for. Yes, Brian?
Um, well, I personally think that the, whether we have, the budget that we allow for security measures should come up in the budgeting section.
Yeah.
Um, as a sort of part of that process. And the, um, this, uh, motion is that we, we don't continue with the, with the marshals.
So that, that is the one, so we've got one vote that we don't continue with the marshals, marshals full stop. And that will mean that the budget goes out of, you know, for that would be wiped out. The second one is that we keep a budget for security and decide what we're going to use it on at a later date.
Can I ask one question about the first proposal? If we said, are we saying no to marshals? And then that means even if we kept some budget for security and say some businesses on the High Street and other people came in and said we can top up that budget, we still wouldn't be allowed the marshals?
No, we're just, you know, the first, the first one is that we're just cancelling the marshals.
Okay.
And therefore the money that's been put on one side of the budget for them would go full stop.
Right.
The second one is that we might not be going for the marshals, but we're keeping a budget, not necessarily the one that's in there.
Yeah.
But a budget and deciding what that is going to be spent on at a later date, is that right?
You're right, because that's part of the budget. Well then, to my understanding, jump in there and say what we're really seeing is we're not going to automatically renew the current marshal arrangement. Because we don't have anything to cancel, because we don't have marshals in the moment. So actually, we're, we're going to say we're not going to automatically renew it. And then once we made our budget, we can say then we'll decide what we want to amend towards.
We have to look at alternatives, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, so you don't want to have brought up the idea of cancelling full stop?
Well, I think we're all doing this.
We're not renewing it.
No, what you're saying is, so the proposal is that we say that the budget is going to be discussed, whether we, and what we're going to do with it. So it will be A, how much we're going to spend, and B, what we're going to spend it on. Is that the proposal?
I think it's just the fact we're not going to automatically renew. We're going to stop the tending process at the moment.
The proposal is not to renew the marshals contract.
Yeah.
Michael proposed, I'll just second it.
Okay, then we'll go with it. So, me, no, who's voting for that? One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And against? Right, okay then? Okay then, so the budget. Yeah.
I'll check my budget, do I? See, what's my tapkins on the budget? A budget, proper tapkins. Right. First thing is to note that we have been in many discussions about this budget. So it has been going round and round in circles, uh, which is a good thing. And there have been criticisms and perhaps they were too quick just to weave stuff through without thinking about it. Or even things that were just suggested to us. So we have been through it. And I have received a lot of feedback from the public. They, like me, find it almost impossible to actually follow the current format of the budget. But you sit there and you start to get used to some of the cost centres and work out where the money's going. We started off with a huge, seemed like a huge increase in the preset. And we then decided that was too big and could we cut everything and get it right down? The feedback was, don't cut. The feedback was, don't cut everything. So we kind of went around again. And I think we've kind of gone, the budget proposal, which is there again, is too large again. And I've not had feedback from any single resident saying that they really support rises at all particularly, and certainly not in the region of sixteen percent. I think that's unpalatable, uh, for me. So I, um, think we should keep our preset within our own published guidelines, which say it should be no more than rate of inflation, which is going to be about eight and a half, nine percent or so. And still, understanding that's relatively high, it's still breaking all our pre-budget, uh, forecasts. So we're going to have to redo those forecasts because it just works fiction now because we've exceeded the next four years. We probably should have updated those before we start discussing the budget. But as it is, I think, um, we can work within a figure of eight and a half or nine percent, keeping budgets for things that we want, essential services, youth services. There have been some cuts from Bains, but not as much as we're probably making out. And we might be able to keep some money for security services. But I think we should do it within that sort of level of, of increase, which should be sort of sixteen pence a week for a band D, I believe. And, and certainly not as much as thirty-three pence. And I think one of the things that's been really useful for everybody is if we'd had finance. Well, first thing to notice, finance committee did not push, propose the preset anyway because it has to come to full council. But by having a working party, it actually allowed us to effectively discuss things, albeit in private, I get that. But people have to have discussions to actually understand what everyone's talking about. It's very difficult to have really productive conversations in this environment. So as much as we should have debates in this environment, we have had proper discussions about this budget. And I think we probably all understand that now. And that has been the benefit of having a working party rather than going straight to resolution. So I propose, if it goes any further, that we look to keep our budget within our own stated guidelines, which will be eight or eight and a half percent or so.
So do we, do we have anybody who is able to make calculations so that we can make that decision today? Yep.
Well, I'm not going to hand it up at that, I can do that. Um, but, I mean, I, I agree with Gordon. I think over the years, we've always tried to keep our, uh, increase under the rate of inflation. Um, this year, we have got, um, greater costs, but then so has everybody. And costs of things have risen significantly. And I think that's, you know, everybody is recognizing that, our daily lives, that things have gone up by a lot. Um, and I think there are some adjustments we could make to the budget that would bring the increase, um, to around the eight percent mark. Um, and there are some specific items that, that we could put forward to do that. Um, and we could go through those if we're bored.
Um, I agree with Gordon, Brian, we've seen all of some of the, the figures and ways that they can, they can move the budget down to that level, and we're happy with. We were, that, that headline of near sixteen percent sort of became the one that we were looking at. It, it never was really, the last meeting we had, there's still different options on the table. There are four different options that we went away with, um, which had other things that we could, uh, you know, choose to include or not choose to include. And I think some of the proposals here, um, with some of those as well as some cost cuttings in other areas. Bringing it down, I think it is achievable to get through that mindset.
Um, well, Richard first, and then you can go back over it.
Um, we spent a whole meeting on this. We ended up arriving at this budget after quite intense discussion. And we agreed at that meeting that it would come before this council, um, for, uh, the normal procedure of the council that noting or accepting the budget. We had no time left. We cannot have another budget meeting to discuss how the budget is going to be set up. We've wasted three meetings on bickering over this. We have a lot to do. Town environment, hundred and thirty-six thousand pounds, that's what we need to spend on the town authority. Essential services, council office, staff equipment, two hundred and three thousand pounds. That's what we need to spend there. We can't keep fooling around with this. We, we discussed it, we agreed. There was a majority decision to accept these figures and put them before this meeting. There was a majority vote. Right? Not a, not total majority, but there was a majority vote for this here. And I think we'd be, um, choosing, doing more than choosing ourselves in the fall. If we decide to change it. No. Thirty-two, thirty-two pence additional on the band D house will get us this budget. This budget means that we can do everything that we have got on our books to do.
And then Michael? Well.
I've just, um, well, just really a point, that, that was a working party and therefore it can't make decisions. And though it can come back with a recommendation to the full council, but now is the time to make a decision on that.
Yes, uh, and you, and you can upon those, uh, extensive working party discussions, it's having got us a long way along the way. As we reflect and, uh, work out all indications, so we come to this, which is a momentous decision when the full council moves and makes a decision. To put the thirty-three pence into perspective, Bains is putting the adult preset, uh, that's, that's to look after all the adults. And Bains has forced the vulnerable adults et cetera up by two percent. That's sixty-one pence on a band D property. And the three percent council tax, uh, apart from the adult, uh, preset, which Bains is raising, puts ninety pence on a band D property. So little Miss Emma Norton with no statutory responsibilities recommends to put a third, or more than a third in fact, of what Bains is putting on, on the council tax. Uh, this puts the, a sort of perspective on how unacceptable this large increase is.
Steve?
Well, we're here to reflect the views of the public. And the public have stated on several occasions that they wouldn't entertain increases like sixteen percent. And we haven't wasted time by coming back time and time again, trying to reduce it down to a reasonable level. That's what we've done. We've got it down to a reasonable level that I think we can't, we can't get it any lower. And I think that would be acceptable to most of the public, and that is not a waste of time.
If I'll come in, I think, um, this idea of thirty-three pence a week is not very much, is obviously a fancy, because it's thirty-three percent on what it already is. So you can say thirty-three pence on top of anything isn't very much extra, but if you're starting off with a high figure, lots of councils have smaller presets than we do. Bigger councils have smaller presets than we do. And, um, we need to get ourselves out of the habit of saying, this is how much it costs. The taxpayer will fit the bill. We need to start setting budgets and working within the budget. So if we have a budget for managing the public open spaces, we set the budget and we manage the public open spaces within the budget. We don't just put the budget up to an infinite amount effectively saying, right, we need an extra facilities, we need extra this. No, we set a budget and we work within it, and that's how we should proceed. And we can't just keep on reading people's, uh, people, uh, people, people's hats like it's on a piggy bank.
I'm not, I'm, as you know, I don't get involved in the arguments, the discussions, sorry. But in actual fact, that figure there was only two pounds and dubbies last year, so it is up by thirty-three pence. So that is correct.
That's, very fine. That's, that's, that was the initial proposal.
Yeah, but this is what we're talking about, the thirty-three percent, yes.
No, no.
So it, but that's, it, it is actually, yeah.
Okay.
But that's not saying anything about anything else that anyone is saying.
I see. Um, do we have, the discussions were, were all useful and, and, and really to, we, in, well, to show that, that we, we haven't really got a, a plan. We, we've, we've got figures of, um, of what we're saying, this is what it costs to, to run that aspect of the town council. This is where, but we, we haven't got, well, I'm not aware that we've got priorities. And this is where we are spending our money. We know what areas want spending in amongst us. We want events and we want to encourage, um, you know, leisure and, you know, support various things that are going on in the town. But we, we don't, the, the strategy that the, the budget is being allocated towards, as a, you know, sort of a plan for the future, that's, that's sort of become plain that it's what we need so we can justify, we can explain why these were increasing certain areas and decreasing other areas, having all these together. So the, the, you know, saying that, you know, this money is allocated to that thing and that's what it costs to run it, that's not true. We can make savings in all sorts of areas, or just potential to make savings in all sorts of areas. And we can decide on the priorities. My speaking point on the other meeting was the, was after we'd agreed on a, on a figure, on, on, or we're getting towards a figure, a, uh, a warden, um, system budget came up. And then that was, that's why we ended up with several different versions of the budget, which, which is, that was the one, you know, the, the basic one. But then all these other bits rounded up, and that's where the stumbling block came. We never agreed on any of those. They were always open, we've always deferred at each meeting, until this point. At this point, at this meeting, my understanding is that we need to agree preset. Uh, which it's, it's kind of unfortunate that, you know, some people have worked out that we can make savings and what we can afford them to, to lose, to bring the preset down to eight, when something is set, which is where some of us feel it should be. Um, you know, that evidence is, is a rap, but it's not been presented to full council today. Uh, but, you know, I think my understanding is we need to agree preset, but we don't need to agree the budget, how that money is, is allocated. So we need to decide how, not precisely. We've got, we're very close to deciding where it goes. There's one or two, you know, or half the, the, you know, some more side with others, but some areas there, there's debate. But, you know, we're very close to deciding what we do. We just need to decide preset today and all of it. Just how it's allocated.
Okay, where's Richard?
Um, it's worth knowing that the clerk and her staff devoted a whole day to preparing this budget. Now, the clerk and her staff are the ones that know what we spend the money on, into piece by piece. So I think that we should, in full fairness, give consideration to the clerks and the, the staff's superior knowledge about what this, how this council spends the money when they get in. And the original figure was bigger than the one that we have got down here on this, um, draft budget list. And we, we pared it down to that. Pardon me?
Just saying. There are some things, the, the street marshals are a case in point where, um, they're now thinking, you know, and making decisions that have actually changed the thoughts of the budget. Um, so I don't think, although, yes, I agree, the, the clerk and her staff, uh, did some, some good work on the budget and, you know, I hope they would never take that away. Um, there are things that we can change because this budget is for the, the year going forward. And a lot of, a lot of the work that the clerk and staff, uh, did was sort of based on last year's expenditure. That's, that's fair enough. You have to project that forward. So the administration costs and that sort of thing have all got to be projected forward because you know they can work out roughly what they are. But there are some projects and things which, uh, we're, which do fall, which have not happened yet or are going to change.
Right.
It's one word, one final point, a, a big part of our budget is obviously the town hall. So we can't say we're not being forward-thinking. That is a big project. It's a capital project. It's one with some economic underpinning. And, um, unlike many of the projects which are excellent for aesthetics and, and it's great to walk down the Wellbrook Walk, the, the town hall, which seems to be crumbling and was in more need of restoration than ever before. Every time Nicola comes to visit, will be a money-making asset for the community in a few years' time. And that is actually going to be, uh, something that's actually going to generate money. And so we're investing in, in, in something as well. That is part of our, that's a big part of our budget. And that's forward-looking, ambitious plan. And, and, and it will, it will increase food falls in the middle of the night. Point in the freezing.
Can I, can I, could I perhaps ask, uh, ask if we can ask the town clerk, um, whether he thinks what Martin said would be legal? Can you simply put forward a preset request to Bains without having a budget to back it up?
Right, so, um, the, uh, your requirement, um, is to, uh, set a preset. And that's, if you don't send that in tomorrow, um, you'll be running on fresh air. So you need to set a preset. Gone through a budgeting process, um, and it seems to be changing, uh, uh, as time goes by. So the option that you have is that, subject to, um, what is proposed and seconded, and whether it falls or not, is you could potentially set a preset based on a percentage increase, which is not quite as simple as just adding eight or nine percent onto last year's, uh, D band, because that has changed like, because your tax base has increased, um, slightly. So, um, the, uh, what your proposal would have to be to, um, set a preset um, based on X percentage, uh, of the, uh, of D band, um, subject to reviewing the budget as soon as possible and amending it so that those, uh, that the basic budget figures, because you're over a certain amount of, um, uh, you're, you're over a certain amount, um, and by law you have to create, um, a leave it. So you would, you're quite within, right? So what, what you're required to do by law is to set the preset. Stop setting the budget. And help him for preset reflected the budget, but you're obviously, um, it's a bit of a movable feast. So your requirement is to set preset tonight. Um, and I think based on some discussions, um, that have been had up to this item, the way forward for this council, um, would be to, um, uh, to focus on setting a preset and accepting that, uh, a review of the budget to, um, uh, to fit it within, um, the, uh, the available funding um, needs to happen sooner rather than later. And that is based on the fact that, uh, when austerity kicked in, um, that's what principal authorities had to do. They, they had to review their services based on the fact that the government were giving them less and less each year in, um, grant funding. So in two thousand and ten, they were getting seventy-eight percent of their gross funding directly from grants. Now it's, um, almost insignificant because it's, uh, raised locally. So, so that would be, um, uh, that would be my advice. What I would say is that, um, What I would say is that um uh just based on uh where your previous clerk's got, um their starting precept on the D band is ninety-six pounds, um and they are raising two million pounds, um because it's a bigger um area. So uh having a D band of a hundred and five eighty-one is not um particularly um high for a large town council, about three hundred and twenty-five pounds a year D band, um because they're taking on services. So it's not, your, your figures here might be quite large within your area, but they are not, um, that, that, they're not huge compared to quite a lot of large parish councils. So that, that's just to put it out there, but what you need to do tonight is to set a precept.
So Brian.
Well, um I would like to propose then, um, a precept increase of eight percent.
Which would account, amount to what as a budget expenditure?
Um an income from council tax of just over four hundred and sixty-nine thousand pounds. Um.
That's approximately thirty-four.
Thirty thousand less than um was under the proposed budget. Um that's an increase of eight pound fifty-two per annum for band D. And bring the ba, band D to a hundred and, just over a hundred and fifteen.
I'm sorry, I need to, I'm sorry, I've got to sneak his grip of thought, I'm sorry, somebody just moved his chair a bit, I'm really sorry to mess up seeing him. Should have made sure of the route before we started, you know.
So it's a hundred and fifteen what for band D?
Hundred and fifteen oh three.
Right. Can you use this one? Right, so that's your proposal. Is there a second of that, Gordon? And those in favour? Right. Richard against? What was the exact figure, four hundred and sixty-nine?
Four six nine one eight nine ninety-three.
One eight nine ninety-three.
That's a D band of a hundred and fifteen pounds.
Yeah.
And proposed by.
Brian. By Gordon.
I'd like to also propose that we have a um another working party meeting in order to.
Yeah.
Budget for that, that figure.
Yeah, definitely needed.
Should it, should it be one that we invite public to observe?
Yeah.
The public as well, the public can be, yeah, totally, this may be considered, I think, about the interest of transparency.
Yeah. Okay, right, so go on to two two three, the leaflet. So obviously would have to be redone, so.
You can do more, can't you?
No, all right, so is that all that, or do you need, yeah? Yeah, okay. So two two four, finance and operations committee, consider reinstating this committee.
I think, um I can see the reasons for this, but I think it's a bad idea unfortunately. And for start, it's not long, it's not that long since we got rid of the finance committee. And I understand some of the issues that have been raised about having some of these finance things in full council, but I think through, um, let's say clever time management, possibly calling the odd hat, odd as hawk, working party meeting, I think it's better that things like grant applications and other things come to full council. And, and I think having that, some sort of working party to discuss these things, which are really complicated, you can't go through things like the budget and easily, but it's a finance and operations committee or a full council. So I think that, that, um, the working party's been invaluable for that, and I don't, I don't really want an extra meeting in. So I see the arguments for it, but I think it's, I think we should keep our current system for a little bit longer.
Right.
Yeah, well, I also, um, I mean, we did have a working party for many years, so that did work well, but um there were comments from other councillors who weren't, weren't part of that meeting, that they weren't party to discussions on questions such as grants and also, you know, how the expenditure was going, they felt they didn't have a say in that. Um which was one of the reasons I felt we, you know, we brought the finance into the full committee meeting so that everybody had a chance to make comments on, on finance matters. So um I'm, I'm not going to support this, I'm afraid.
Okay.
Um I had an issue about this particular finance committee because decisions have been made about all councillors being able to make good decisions, I've been one of them, because I was on that committee. And I was coming to meetings, finding things were decided, I do nothing to do.
Okay, Steve.
But any councillor who goes to any meeting they want.
Yeah.
And they can, if you want, take part in discussion, play a problem, they have to be elected to that committee to be able to vote on it, but they can take part in any discussion they want to, on any, and to a working party.
Yeah, but I don't, I actually go into the meetings, that's why I didn't know what was going on until.
Well, no, you can go to every meeting, any councillor can go to any meeting.
Michael.
Again, can, uh, the legality, um, can you have a working party which are all councillors drawn?
Yeah, you can.
It's the council.
No, no, it's a party which can't make decisions.
No, the, uh, a working party is um, is an informal gathering, which is why it doesn't, you can, you don't have to adhere to the three clear days, and that's why people have working, or why councils have working parties, because it doesn't have to, you don't have to publish the agenda within the requirements of the law. It's a committee or a subcommittee, then they have to follow the law government, actually too. Um but uh on the, on the other side, you obviously can't make decisions at the working party. So um it, it's uh, it, it's uh, because the working party hasn't got um any authority of the law, um then uh it's uh, it's not restricted in numbers, the committees are. Um uh, there, there is actually, like, I couldn't find it for you, but I have read that um you can't actually have a committee made up for all the councils, since then called the council. Um but I have known that system in place, a particular council, uh which was essentially illegal, sadly, which was what I was, but I did inherit it. So um, uh, so yeah, as a working party, it's open to all, um, to, to inform and discuss and, and talk about.
And I think going to the public as well, if you want, so you're wrong.
Yeah, because, uh, I mean, it's uh, um, uh, I think giving notice is um, is going to be your, your challenge because uh, um, you're not, so you're not being governed by legal requirements. So if you're going to have a, an open meeting, a working party, obviously you don't have standing orders covering the way the debates is, so it would be a lot more interactional, almost a participatory budgeting situation within council. Um so it would be, um, it would be a much more open, fluid, um, uh, discussion. Um the, the downside really is keeping control of the debate and, and people observing the uh civility aspect.
So where are we then? Proposal?
Well, I propose that we reinstate the finance and ops working party principally because we can't contain finance and ops and all the other business within a normal council meeting times. And we have, um, we, it be, it was becoming the norm that we would uh spend standing orders and extend the meeting time and extend the meeting hours. And there was one occasion then, um, the councillor objected strongly to extending the meeting. So that's why I wrote this, I'd like to see us return to it.
Steve. Could I just say, point out, I told you, can you point out struggling to fit it in personally, I'd rather have a slightly longer full council meeting once a month rather than have an extra meeting.
You're going to have any working parties?
No, no, the, the working party can be as incredible as it likes, but for the sake of, for this. But it doesn't need to meet every single time, and people don't need to attend because it's not a working party, it's informal. It means full council will make the full decisions, everybody's invited to be on the council, and if we need slightly longer to discuss some of things, I think we should take it. I've heard other councils have three-hour meetings, we might normally get it done in two and a half hours, we could even start a little bit earlier. But for people with jobs and families and lots of stuff to do, if we don't have to have an extra committee meeting, because I'm already on, several members are on planning committee as well, we don't need an extra committee, I think the current system should be given a little bit longer, because I think it's actually could work quite well.
Well, I will just say, it's twenty-three minutes to the end, and we have thirteen items still on the agenda.
Can I propose extending to night thirty?
I'll second that.
Tonight? Okay. Everyone waiting for that?
Yeah.
Everyone happy with that? To extend to night.
Lock the doors, won't you?
Yeah. Right, so um I know that's cutting, but we are making a final decision on item G two four? Yeah, right, one proposer, someone second that, but it stays as it is, we don't have a finance and ops committee, Pete. So would they, would you like to vote?
Sorry, I'm not sure we're voting, we're, we're.
You'll vote? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, that was my error. Richard proposed that we formed a finance and operations committee, is there anyone to second that?